Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the August 31 city commission meeting. Would you please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Combenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley? Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Coine?
Here. A motion to excuse the absence of Commissioner Conley would be in order. Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to excuse Conley.
Commissioner Baldini? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes opposed, that motion passes. Note of agenda changes, are there any agenda changes that commissioners wish to have? Seeing none, we will adopt the agenda. Motion to that effect, Commissioner Campana? Make motion to approve the agenda as stated. Commissioner Frazier? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes opposed, okay, that motion passes. I have two announcements, one kind of good announcement. Almost every meeting, I go through a long list of openings on volunteer committees and boards, and we're down to sixteen vacancies, which is really good. We started with a whole big page full, and this is about a little over half a page, so hopefully the committee who studied volunteers and boards, we are going to meet one more time because I'd like to kind of revisit one of their recommendations, so it's just a hint to them, an announcement, hint, hint. And the other thing, it's a very nice letter from the mayor of Hagishomi, Mayor Orgura, both in Japanese and in English, happily, in English, because my Japanese is a little weak. But what he is writing in a very courteous manner, typical of him, is thanking the city and Northern for accepting a student scholar from Hagishomi and giving the city and Northern a wooden bowl handmade from a resident of Hagishomi. So they are just a very, very polite community and really appreciate our visits and their visits, and in particular, in this instance, the scholar that comes every year from that town to Northern, and that has been a great benefit to both communities. The next item is boards and committees. The first item is number fifteen, that's a recognition of outgoing members. The first person we would like to recognize is Amy Conover. Amy, could you come over to there? She is leaving the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee. I'll meet you over there, Amy. Amy, it pains me to do this, because you're, I think, moving out of the area, right? And we're losing a really good board member, and I want to thank you. We have a certificate of appreciation, a T-shirt, and a button for you. And thank you so much for the service you've done, and you've just been great. So would you like to say anything?
I would just want to say that it's been a pleasure and an honor to work on the boards and to work with this community. It's a community that is dear to my heart, it will always be home. I am taking a wonderful opportunity down in Plymouth, Michigan, and will be moving by the end of the week, and I want to thank you all for the time that I've been able to contribute and be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and you'll learn a lot and then come back, okay?
I hope to.
Good luck, okay, good luck to you. The next person is Jim Madison. I gotta go back and get my agenda here. Jim, would you come up? Sure. Have to be really nice to Jim, because we're appointing him to the local officers' compensation board. He determines how much we get paid. Jim, you're a wonderful person.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I really do want to say, he is a great volunteer. I'm on a couple of boards with him, and he just is a great, hard-working volunteer. And he's not going to have to work too hard on this, because how many, how many times does this meet a year, Jim?
Actually, met earlier this month and will meet again in 2017.
So let's give a big hand for Jim, okay? We're glad for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you really are a great volunteer, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm on my way to a meeting at the university, I'm already late.
Well, thank you for coming, okay, Jim. The next, we have two reappointments, and well, just one reappointment, and that's Taylor Clip for the Planning Commission, representing as a representative to the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee for a term ending September 1st, 2016. Is there a motion to appoint Taylor to that? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move we appoint Taylor Clip to the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee as the Planning Commission representative for a term ending September 1st, 2016.
Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Any discussion from either of you?
None.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the reappointment, please say yes. Yes. Okay, opposed, that motion passes unanimously. The next is a presentation from the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and Dan Torres is going to come up here and up to there and tell us what's going on and what your program is. Thank you, Dan, for coming. And accompanying him is Sherri Davis, the executive director of the Brownfield. Pardon me?
It's actually the other way around. I'm holding the coat.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So you can just take right off?
I'm Dan Torres, member of one of the commissioners of our Marquette Brownfield Commission.
Good evening. We're delighted to be here to fill you in on all of the amazing, amazing things that are going on with the Brownfield Authority and the city of Marquette. Our chair is in Chicago this evening and is unable to join us, and our vice chair is also unable to join us, so our secretary just stepped right in, and we are, you know, so delighted that he just is right there, like all of our board. We have an awesome board, multiple talents and really, really great things that they pull together for us. So we're going to run through this, and certainly, you know, if there are questions as we go through this, you know, we're happy to take them and address them, so I guess we'll get started. Do you like to lead that, or do you wish me to?
I've got a question.
Are you up? Oh, Jen, we need you. Jen LaPage is the liaison to our Brownfield Authority and a multiple-talented lady.
Thought we were talking through that.
Okay, yep, yep, so, well, I'll lead.
So the Brownfield Authority was established in 2007, and the main purpose was to help facilitate the revitalization of a lot of properties that, in Marquette, that fall under some of these categories: contamination, blighted, functionally obsolete, or historic properties. Those are the criteria, initial criteria, that properties have to fall under in order to potentially qualify for brownfield. The challenge is, the big challenge is that there are a lot of extraordinary costs to deal with those issues that are above and beyond the cost of the actual development of the project. And so, and very often, the project might not even get underway without the support of the brownfield to kind of help with those extraordinary costs. So the primary way that this happens is, you may hear the term called TIF, Tax Increment Financing, is to capture some incremental taxes that will facilitate the private investment to happen, and then those TIF revenues reimburse the developer for just the eligible expenses that occurred to help develop or redevelop that property. And there's a series of things that have to go through before that happens, obviously. Any project has to be presented to our board, the MBRA, get our approval, get the city commissioners' approval, and if there is state capture involved, that also, they also, we have to, the developer has to create an Act 31 work plan, and that must be agreed by ourselves and the state of Michigan as well. This is the list of our current membership, a really nice mix of folks, good group, very talented, everybody kind of brings a lot of different aspects to the group.
The development agreement, that is part of any process, I guess I should start with, when we meet with folks, we look at the kinds of things that could be eligible for brownfield tax credits, and if it looks like it's something that is very viable, that would be cost-effective for them and beneficial to the area, then we encourage the development of the brownfield plan. And through the brownfield plan, we develop all of the terms and conditions as, for the tax capture, and all of the financial commitments, a lot of interaction with the taxing agencies, and figuring out how to put together a plan that's going to benefit the people coming forward with a project, and whether it's beneficial to the city, and so we move on from that. If we go to a bond issue, which is something that many times takes place, that is the top priority, so when someone comes to us, excuse me, and for example, if we go for a top, a bond, a bond financial commitment, that is the first priority. When they come in and the TIF comes in, that's the first priority, but we lay out how we're going to repay the city, how we're going to repay the bonding, so it's a pretty safe circumstance to go into, because we make sure that the costs that are incurred are going to be covered first, and then we deal with what comes after that.
So we're going to highlight a couple of the very prominent projects that exist because of the opportunities of brownfield. Of course, the Founder's Landing, you know, I was taking a road trip yesterday, and I knew I was going to be here tonight, and one of the things that kind of was rolling through my head is I was trying to picture Marquette without these significant projects that are here today because of the brownfield opportunities, and it would be pretty, pretty interesting to see that lakefront without what's there now. And it really, truly, that project would not have happened without the possibilities, and we have a very successful and popular hotel, a lot of very successful, well, condominium project, I think last time I walked by yesterday, there were only three left. Certainly lots of employment. I think it's really become, particularly, we see it this summer, with that area, that corridor, just being, I think, one of the highlights of anybody who's visiting Marquette. The other one that's very prominent is the Liberty Way, which we have some recent news, you've probably heard about that. The initial building, it's about 28,000 square feet, the M Bank Building on the west end, the hotel project, the Stabridge Suites is, is under construction as we speak. You see the crane and the work that you're, you're not necessarily seeing are the two-level parking, two-level parking deck that's going to be beneath the hotel. And then recently, of course, the announcement that UPHB was going to be taking the, essentially the mirror image building opposite M Bank. So that's going to be quite, quite a project when it's completed, and once again, significant, would not nearly have been to this scale, maybe not have happened at all without the opportunities of brownfield reimbursement.
The only thing I would add to that would be that, you know, as a result of that, the Upper Peninsula and the city of Marquette will have the first extended stay hotel, and I think that's pretty awesome.
Another one, a little bit smaller scale, but still a really great addition to the fabric of our community. It's actually no longer proposed. I believe they opened a couple of weeks ago and are taking guests. You typically don't see a ground-up construction of a bed and breakfast, but the location is stunning. It's a beautiful place, about a million-dollar investment on what used to be part of the old foundry property, so a nice, a nice change from what it was previously.
And it shows the flexibility of the Brownfield Authority, being able to do the huge, huge projects as well as the smaller projects. And again, we're unique in that this is the first B&amp;B in the city of Marquette. We're really proud to have the brownfield part of that.
Last but not least?
Yes, indeed.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, last but not least, our awesome project, the Duke Life Point Hospital, that has made the decision to stay in the city of Marquette and develop this beautiful facility that's going to benefit residents of the entire Upper Peninsula. I know you have seen lots about it, and will be seeing lots more about it, and we're delighted to have some of their folks here with us tonight, but this is really an amazing step forward for the city of Marquette, to have them make this commitment to this facility, and we're, again, very proud as a brownfield authority to be able to be a partner in this endeavor with them.
This is just a quick recap of some of the, a portion of the types of eligible activities, in this case for the Duke Life Point project, that exists and are going to be used for the project. So we've got a total eligible, eligible expenses of right around $40 million that are being reimbursed through the TIF funding. Against investment, and I may be wrong, but the last number I heard was somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of, I think, the brownfield plant's at 170 million. I believe I read something, it might have been closer to three plus. So you can see the, the ratio is, you know, if you, if you look at strictly, you know, gosh, are we losing this much in taxes? Somebody might say, well, I think you've got to look at that as it relates, as a proportion to the investment. And I think that's where it really becomes significant, is particularly when it, if a project doesn't happen without that, I think it really, you can see the value in the program. This was a recent, and, you know, a lot of these things are, are still kind of in flux, but this is kind of a sampling of the types of things. These are the infrastructure component of the project, and I think it's somewhere around $12 million, not including the relocation of the service center. Spring and Seventh Street upgrade, creating a new Washington Street access, relocation or rerouting of Berga Street, the Grove, Seventh Street, you know, we, we use that term cautiously, because I think a lot of folks, and that's, this is one that I think in particular is still in flux. It's a, we'll call it the Seventh and Grove intersection. How that's going to be executed, I think, still remains to be seen, there's a lot of questions on that one, but there is a budget for that. Of course, electrical, water, sewer, and service upgrades to accommodate the project, and then a new roundabout, a second one, which will be built somewhere halfway between the current roundabout and McLoughlin. In addition, there's about another million dollars that are, that have been allocated for some acquisition, acquisitions that may be needed to make some of these things happen, particularly the intersection upgrades.
And the relationship with the LDFA, with the city having a local tax, local development tax finance authority in place, it required approval from them on future projects. We sort of carved out all of the brownfield projects that we were involved with and those that we knew of, but of course, not being mind readers, we couldn't know what else is out there. And so when the LDFA came in, the Brownfield Authority connected with them, because the process now will be on new projects. We will be working with the LDFA on how to determine how we can share those TIF funds, because they will sort of have priority on all, but there are some things that the Brownfield Authority can bring to the table. And we were very pleased because our Brownfield Authority met with the LDFA, and we were assured of just great cooperation and expediency, and expediency is sort of the thing with our Brownfield Authority. When someone comes in with a project, we typically have to move pretty quickly, and the LDFA has assured us that they're certainly happy to work with us, so we're very excited about the kinds of projects that are going to be continuing on utilizing brownfield funds and working with the LDFA. Talk about our projects, okay. So the key projects that we have been working on are Founder's Landing, Market Place, and Parking Facility, and that is, you'll start seeing some activity there. There was a little bit of lull in the activity there for a bit, but Founder's Landing is up and running and moving forward with the plans that they have. The Liberty Way Stabridge Suites is just absolutely awesome. Every time you drive by that street, there's something new going on, and there's some pretty exciting activities. And certainly the DLP, the hospital replacement. The integration with LDFA, I've just chatted with you about that. We'll probably continue to apply for EPA brownfield grant applications, which are opportunities which will come to us that we can perhaps work with some other properties that somebody may not have their eye on at this moment, but will give us the opportunity to do some assessment of properties in the city that we might be able to take a lead on. And one of the hopes is that next year at this time, I will be somewhere presenting on a national scale all of the awesome projects we have here. I will be in Chicago for the next three days at a national brownfield conference to determine how best to sell the city projects that we have. We have a lot to show, and I'm really proud to be part of the group and the team that is, that is doing this, so. Are there any questions anyone has?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Campana?
In regards to the millage between the LDFA and the brownfield, the authorities are only allowed to take so many mills per year, so will you be splitting that millage?
We may.
I mean, if it's like a six mills total, would you be four and two, or three and three, but you can't go more than that, is that correct?
We'll have to, to talk about that and figure out, you know, if proportionally it's a huge brownfield project, I'm sure the LDFA will say, go for it, and, you know, we would take whatever proportion is appropriate, but, you know, I, I think we're going to work together very well. I think it's just an excellent opportunity for the city of Marquette.
So it'll be a friendly negotiation?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Just to make a comment, it better be friendly, because the commission appoints both boards, so it would be advisable to get along, okay?
Yes, indeed.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the good work that you've accomplished this year, a lot.
Thank you. And to that point, I just wanted to make one quick comment. There's somebody who's not a member of our board, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up his name. Mac McLoughlin is our consultant, I'm sure the commissioners have all met him. This, brownfield is a very, very complex and complicated process, and Mac has been phenomenal with, working with the commission, anyone who's done a brownfield project, and I felt important to recognize him in our process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all recognize that, thanks very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Madam Clerk, could you read the proclamation for September 2015, United Way Month?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the United Way of Marquette County, founded in 1943, set forth a mission statement focusing community resources to meet community needs, and whereas United Way has raised more than $11 million through its annual campaigns from the generous support of residents, employees, and businesses, enabling Marquette County nonprofit organizations to serve thousands of residents each year, and whereas United Way encourages our residents to invest in United Way contributions in their home communities, and whereas city government employees give generously to United Way of Marquette County, and whereas 1,500 Marquette residents received help from United Way Agency last year. Now therefore I, J. Michael Coine, Mayor of the city of Marquette, Michigan, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2015 as United Way of Marquette County Month in the city of Marquette, and further, I encourage our residents and city employees to continue their support in this United Way fundraising campaign to raise at least 425,000 to benefit the residents of Marquette County throughout the year of 2016, dated this 31st day of August of 2015.
Thank you for reading that. I just would point out, we, there are two new co-chairs. Chief Angela, who are those co-chair people?
Relatives of mine, no, myself and my son, Mike.
Oh, that's nice.
My third, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, good luck to you, and I hope you can live up to the good job that other co-chairs have done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public comment. Public comment, anyone who wishes to speak has three minutes. They can come to this microphone here. There's a timer over there for three minutes. The green light will go on when you start to talk. The yellow light will come on when there's one minute, it'll start to blink when there's 30 seconds, and then the red light will go on, and your time is up. When you come up, you can either make a comment for three minutes, or you can reserve time for the agenda items at the end of this agenda, items seven and eight, and we'll take your name, and you can come and speak for three minutes also. So anyone wishing to come forward and speak or reserve time, please come forward. State your name, where you live, if you're representing a business, and where you live, your address, and what city or township you live in.
Okay. Dennis Smith, I'm the president and chief executive officer at the Health Plan. I live currently at 1993 County Road 456 in Little Lake in Forsyth Township. I'm just here to, not to get, to give a speech, but just to let you know I'm where I'm here if you have any questions when you get to item eight on your new business.
Thank you.
Frank Jeffero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. How in three minutes can I address your string of run-on sentences? I cried on January 30, 2012? Why would someone cry if you'd spoken to them as so kindly as you portrayed yourself August 10? You spoke some of those words in the hallway, but only after you threatened me. You failed to admit that here as a charter member, you entered the men's room, stood one foot from me, and said in a soft creepy tone, "You little s-word, don't ever smear at me again, or else something is going to happen." I'm not going to tell you what it is, but something is going to happen, and you repeated your threat. This concurs with that night's diary and the next day's. My January 31 notes read, "I wondered if what happened last night was really true, threatened by a mad doctor. I'd like to know what the threat was, other than that something would happen if I ever sneered at him again. I've laughed a lot about it all day and last night," end quote. There it is, written soon afterward versus your recollection of three and a third years. No way did I cry. The chief will affirm that I wasn't crying when I reached him a minute later, but looked upset. I was astonished by your audacity. The chief never told me until lately that our stories didn't jive. I assumed you'd at least told him the truth, for he told me the matter was resolved, when it's not, especially now. You said you're tired of every few weeks hearing how weird you are, when I never said that. Whatever weird connotation of creepy you implied August 10 was all yours and none of mine. When I said creepy, I meant creepy, as defined in the dictionary. The same kind of creepiness with which you stole our closing comment and stared in the space during my July 27 comment and lied about your 2012 threat. You have the nerve to ask me to respect you as a person. You weren't all fatherly- You weren't all fatherly and compassionate that night. Prior to that meeting, the space outside the south door was mobbed. There was nowhere to pass, forcing me to open the door to its extreme. You then suddenly appeared a foot away when I'd been trying to avoid you. Not knowing you were there, my face dropped at the unexpected sight. I wasn't rude. August 10, you said, you frankly had to go to the bathroom. Why then, right after your threat, would you follow me out of the men's room halfway up the hall on my rush to inform the chief before the meeting? He didn't have to go that badly. This is an example of how not taking responsibility early on turns a minor threat into an ordeal. You surmised when you argue with one idiot, you end up with two idiots. You failed to take your own advice. Lying into a public microphone transcends an idle men's room threat. I'll challenge you to a polygraph. If whichever one of us lied, immediately resigns from this chamber. Just fess up and apologize to avoid further embarrassment. The truth will set you free. Remember, I've got the best witness of all. You.
Good evening. Yor Malankin, 8 Marquette Drive. On a more happier note, I had the privilege of traveling downstate and ended up inadvertently comparing our community with the communities that we were in. And boy, do we live in a fabulous community. I was telling my wife, boy, I miss the fine restaurants that we have in our community, the camaraderie we have in our community, the friendliness that we have in our community and the incredible tourism that we have in our community. We were in another area, which I will not mention the name, and we did not have any of that. We didn't feel comfortable, didn't have meals that we were happy with. And my wife says, well, Yor, you've been spoiled by the market restaurateurs, the family restaurants that we have in here and the camaraderie and the good governmentship that we have in our community. In the other communities, their downtowns are bleak, their people are not taking time and energy and effort into promoting their community. You, as the commissioners, are promoting our community and doing a fabulous job. So thank you. Thank you again.
My name is Dawn Hayes. I live at 400 Harlow in Marquette. I recently sent an email to all the commissioners. If I forgot someone, I apologize. My email detailed my concerns regarding a marijuana growing operation across the street from my children's school. There were a few times over the summer when we would drive by, excuse me, on my way to my parents' house a couple of times a week, windows down, you can always smell it really strong. And so we would pull in sometimes in the parking lot to see if you could actually smell it from the playground. And you could. My children are six and eight, but there are children at that school that are as young as four, all the way up to 10 or 11. And it bothers me greatly that there will be four-year-olds outside for recess smelling the marijuana this school year. I'm asking the city commission to please create and pass a medical marijuana ordinance that establishes drug-free zones around schools and parks in the city of Marquette. Many Michigan cities have already done this. There are many examples of these ordinances popping up throughout the state. They all do have some sort of established drugs-free zone from 500 up to 1,000 feet. And they also will sometimes include parks, libraries, churches, community buildings. Some are restricted to stay away from like downtown areas, things of that nature. And I'm not really concerned about that. I just really would like to see the schools and parks that are set aside for children to be at least 500 feet from growing operations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Avery. I live at 612 Windcrest Drive in Marquette. I wanted to lend my support to Dawn's comments. I too have children in the elementary school in Marquette. And there's a concern about this medical drug growing house of some sort near the school where the smells of the marijuana smoke are wafting over the playground frequently. And I think that was probably not a consequence that was seen when medical marijuana laws were passed. And it sounds like other cities from Dawn's research have passed some laws, notably, I think, Kalamazoo and Fremont. So please take a look at those laws, see if that might be appropriate for the city of Marquette. Because certainly that's not what we need happening near our schools and in public places. So I want to commend Dawn for her courage in sending that email and coming forward and thank the commission for their consideration on this issue.
Good evening. My name is John Colbly. I live at 20 Marquette Drive. My concern is the displacement of public works. And over Duke Life Point, you're all happy to get everything over there and you've got a big plan for it, but you don't really have a big plan for public works. It's all up in the air. 20 years ago, you moved from Wright Street over there and decided that public works would be centrally located, would be a good asset to the city. And now we're going to stick them back over on Wright Street or try to buy some of the college property and put them there. Why don't we start using some of our own funds and our own property and put that doll chemical place instead of trying to someday maybe see something really pretty in some buildings and such other stuff? It would make an excellent site and you could still do your composting over there because you ain't doing it with this new recycle thing that you've got going because that hasn't happened yet. And if you had to, you could put down here in Founder's Landing, down on the end, you could put maybe a salt shed or something like that or dirt so you might have easy access to go another place in this part of town. The city has access through Founder's Landing. Other trucks don't have it, but at least your city trucks can run through there and they have good access out on Wright Street and Presque Isle. But you're looking at this and you're looking at the Armory and these other things and putting it back, right back where it was. Heck, buy up that sports complex and put it there again, right where you started out with. I guess nobody comes in opposition. Everybody just lets you guys go ahead and do things. But yous don't have a solid plan. And I would like to see a solid plan put in action before Duke Life Point supposedly starts building and kicks us out of there. You know, number one concern is public works. That's a city entity. That's something that we should have. Duke Life Point should take second seat. I'm sorry, this is all I have to say.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section, go on to item number six, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana? Support that? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
opposed? Okay, then the motion passes. We move on to item numbers. Seven, under new business professional services for legal counsel slash tax tribunal. Madam Clerk, could you read the item number seven?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Recently, Odevaro Properties filed two petitions with the Michigan Tax Tribunal challenging the tax assessment on property it owns in the city of Marquette. City administration asked the law firm representing the city and other tax tribunal litigation to make a proposal to represent the city in this case as well. Attached for the commission's consideration is a letter stating the terms of engagement for legal services prepared by Jack Van Culvering dated August 24, 2015, on behalf of the law firm of Bloom Sluggett Morgan, P.C. Fiscal effect: real property taxable value and dispute for this property is $1,508,200, which will result in a loss of $22,500 to the general fund. Recommendation: approve of professional services agreement for special legal counsel with Bloom Sluggett Morgan, P.C. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, is there a motion to regarding this item? Commissioner Baldini?
Your Honor, I move that we approve a professional service agreement for special legal counsel with Bloom Sluggish Morgan.
Support? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Baldini? Any comment?
Here's another instance where because of the state really not coming to grips with the whole, as we've, it's come to be known, the dark store concept, we're having to spend some more money to defend the city, defend the concept. And this one will cost $22,500 in the general fund, but it's also beginning to consume a great deal of time and costs for legal purposes. And we've got to take it on and we just can't acquiesce to it. And this thing is going to begin to snowball that already has. And it really is critical that our state government and state legislature take it on. We can't. It's out of our jurisdiction and purview, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I agree, Baldini. I think we need to fight this and I hope our legislators can find a way to close these loopholes so these don't continue to go on and on and hurt our environment.
Commissioner Campana?
I would like just to add that among the other expenses that this is going to bring on, just to hire a lawyer to fight this, is the lawyer's going to be charging, there are two of them, their combined charge is $460 an hour. I guarantee you there'll be plenty of hours. So this is money out of the city. There will be other charges for fees, filing records, faxing, mailing. I mean, this is going to be very expensive. Normally, we don't have these expenses, but you start adding them up and I have no idea where it's going to go. But, you know, $460 an hour for many, many hours is going to be a lot of money. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Kam Bensy?
I guess my question is, when you look at $465 an hour and we'll be losing $22,500 to the general fund, that puts us at about 40 hours of this professional service before we're paying more than we're actually getting into the general fund. So I guess I'm wondering, do we have any estimate of how many hours this will take? Or do we want to set a cap to this? Or are we just going to spend above and beyond the $22,500 if it comes to that? And I guess I'll ask our city attorney since this is addressed to him.
Could you, I'm not clear that the quote of the 400-something dollar, both lawyers aren't going to work at this at the same time. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So that number is not correct that you're quoting?
No, no. I think what he's saying is that there are others in the firm who will charge a lesser rate for work.
Yes.
And I think what he does is he tries to use a lesser hourly when he can. So no, it's not, he charges $275 an hour when he works and his associate charges $185. Way I read the letter.
So they're not working at the same time?
No, no, not at all.
So that needs to be clarified before you answer the question.
So then the question is...
Do you have an estimate? I guess how much time do these cases take? I know it can vary, but...
We, of course, this firm has handled a number of cases and they're in various stages. I would say some of the smaller cases, there's very little activity on them. The We Energies case is drawing the most work, you might say, the most time from the attorneys. But some of the other ones, it's a matter of filing an answer and doing some discovery and basically working through the tax tribunal's timelines or deadlines for doing things and then eventually hearing. But I would say that there's not as much intense work in a case that is unlike We Energies or some of the other big cases that we've talked about over the past several months.
Okay. Is that all? Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Baldini?
I appreciate what Commissioner Kam Bensy is indicating, but, you know, if we lose this, it's $22,500 a year. So in a 10-year period, it's a quarter of a million dollars, which obviously could have increased if the value of the property goes up. But it is, it is an interesting question, but thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, call a question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number eight, the amended development and reimbursement agreement regarding Liberty Way project at 857 West Washington Street?
Thank you, sir. Background. A Brownfield plan was approved by the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, MVRA, and the Marquette City Commission for the Veridia Project at 857 West Washington Street. And an Act 381 work plan for state tax capture was approved by the MVRA and the Michigan Strategic Fund for reimbursement of Brownfield-eligible activities through the capture of increased taxes due to additional private investments. An amended development agreement with Veridia Group LLC was approved by the MVRA and the city commission in June 2013 that outlined the roles and responsibilities for reimbursement of eligible activities through Brownfield tax increment revenues captured by the MVRA. There is also a lease agreement between Veridia Group LLC and the MVRA, which qualifies the underground parking facility as a Brownfield-eligible activity. The MVRA issued bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the city for the improvements to Lincoln and Washington Streets. The bond payments are in first position for Brownfield tax increment revenue capture. Veridia Group LLC developed the first phase of the project, a 28,000-square-foot building in the northwest portion of the property. The second phase of the project is a 69,000-square-foot Stabridge Suites developed by Liberty Way Hospitality LLC on the southern portion of the property. A transfer of eligible Brownfield property and assignment of interest was approved by the MVRA to provide the reimbursement to Liberty Way Hospitality LLC for eligible activities. Recently, Veridia Group LLC has entered into a purchase agreement with the Upper Peninsula Health Plan LLC for the northeast portion of the property for a 28,000-square-foot office building. In order to facilitate the development and provide for equitable arrangement, an amended development and reimbursement agreement between the three development entities, the city, the MVRA, and amended lease agreement between Liberty Way Hospitality LLC and the MVRA are proposed to provide for Brownfield capture and eligible activities approved by each project, clarify the relationships for the underground parking and update the agreement to the current status. The attached First Amendment to the amended agreement is proposed to address a circumstance under which a party may not be subject to property tax and obligates the Brownfield tax increment revenues from other parties to cover the costs of the annual bond payments and MVRA administrative operating and transaction costs. The MVRA approved the amended development and reimbursement agreement at their August 27, 2015 regular meeting and recommends approval by the city commission. Fiscal effect: none. Recommendation: approve the attached amended development and reimbursement agreement, amended lease agreement and First Amendment to the amended development and reimbursement agreement for the Liberty Way project at 857 West Washington Street. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Baldini?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the attached amended development and reimbursement agreement along with the amended lease agreement and the First Amendment to the amended development and reimbursement agreement for the Liberty Way at 857 West Washington Street.
Thank you. Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
I would support.
Commissioner Baldini?
Well, I think this is, at Liberty Way, we knew that there was going to be a third leg to the stool. And we had been told that it was coming and it probably is coming much sooner than we understood, which is exciting. And they already have a tenant, which is good. And it will be a tremendous addition there. And it's also keeping a number of employees in the downtown area. I think it's a very positive thing. It's a brand-new facility. I know that the new occupants were looking for space and it's been no secret. And so this is, this is quite exciting. And it's another part of medicine and it's another part of the community's identification with, with medicine and the life point down the road. I think, I think it's great news and we want to thank the Brownfield people and also thank the Liberty Way people for really being willing to look at this and say, hey, this is a great opportunity for the community. And so I just think it's, it's good news for, for us.
Thank you. Just to clarify things, this building is not, they're not a tenant. UP Health Plan is buying this.
Buying, yeah, they're buying this. Did I say?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not Veridia as a tenant. They are buying this. And that's why all these amendments to the amendments are necessary. Commissioner Campana?
We'd like to say it, it's just, you know, it's gratifying to see that this whole project is finally... is finally, is coming to completion. You'll have, as you said, a third leg there. It's my understanding that this development or this agreement, amendment agreement, is needed to make sure that all the TIF money will be collected and that the expenses will be paid off. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the situation is that UPHC is a for-profit at this point, and the concern was that they might, if they ever went nonprofit, there would be no money coming in, and that has to be covered, and I believe it is covered under this amendment. Maybe I should ask a yes or no from Sherri?
Why don't you come to the microphone?
Yes, that's the intention of the amendment.
Is that the major thrust of the whole amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Frazier?
Happy to see the brownfield worked out this amendment, and we approved it, and I think it's great for the DDA, and also great to keep jobs in the city and keep people moving forward, and good for the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
Just real quickly, where is UP Health located right now? Are they renting currently? Or are they, where are they?
Could you come to answer that question to this microphone right there?
Dennis? Thank you. Yes, we're located, our primary office is 228 West Washington. It's the old public service garage, and then we occupy a significant portion of Old City Hall next door.
Okay. And just to make sure, this is probably a question for Sherri, but this doesn't change the TIF agreement we passed previously, correct?
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for answering those questions, and we'll call through the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we move on to comments from the Commission. Mr. Campana, would you mind going for, Campana, go first, please?
Okay, I have some sympathy for the drug-free zone. I don't know if we have an ordinance. I did. Chief Angely may or may not have that information, but it seems reasonable to have that somewhere. Do you know if we have such an ordinance?
We do not. No, we have no ordinances governing medical marijuana whatsoever. We just follow the state law right now.
But a person can't sell or buy within a thousand feet of a school, correct?
I'm not clear on that, but I believe it might, that might only pertain to a dispensary-type situation if we were in fact to allow those.
Okay, so this would require a whole new ordinance if we're to pursue this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Food for thought in case we have nothing else to do, you know? If there's nothing else going on, we can pursue that. The other thing, the municipal service center, he had some points, but I believe that we've got some more information coming out that's going to show that we are in fact moving ahead and in fact have a very good plan, and I will ask the city manager, do we not have some information coming on that soon?
Yes, sir. I'm going to be getting an update from the project manager tomorrow, and hopefully we'll be able to share that with the Commission shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Commissioner Frazier?
Happy, just like I said, happy to see some jobs staying in the city of Marquette. You know, these could have moved outside the city into the township or something like that, so I'm happy to see them stay local. Sad to see last day of summer, they stay outside. And as far as the drug-free zone, I have a daughter in elementary school, and a couple of ones, so I agree with the other commissioners and the public's comment. Might be something for us to look at. Maybe we could research that or something like, maybe put it on the to-do list or something like that. As far as the public works, we've been assured by Kurt from Buffett Works that, you know, their services will not be interrupted, and I hope that the city manager will have some updates in the future for our new plans for that, and I assure that the city will work hard in making sure that nothing goes wrong with that, so.
Okay. Commissioner Campana?
I'd also like to thank Don Hayes for emailing us and also coming to speak. You know, hopefully, we can do, I guess, something, something to alleviate this. The service center, I guess I hope there's a good plan coming forward soon as well. Public hearings that we approved tonight for the sewer water and stormwater, I do believe that we need an education plan for the public. I think we need to educate people on the true cost of our utilities and the true cost of what we're bonding for, the true cost of, you know, what the community owns and just what shape those assets are in. It's by far our largest asset, and I think it would do us well. You know, we're proposing to raise the rates. I think if we don't educate the public, I think it's, we're going to do them a disservice. So I hope we can get some more information behind that even before we do a larger rate study, hopefully this year with some grant funding. I'd just like to reiterate the importance of Section 5 in the city charter. It does grant the importance to commissioners to be able to ask questions of reasonable inquiry to city staff when they have questions. I don't think any of us abuse that. I think all of us are very considerate of that, but I do believe it is important that commissioners have that right. Lastly, I did have someone reach out to me. Just mentioned an interesting quote with the media coverage in the last two weeks, and that was that it's easy to find a scapegoat. Often, they are the minority. But when the truth rises, as it often does, the scapegoats actually don't look too bad. Thank you.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I was listening to the brownfield presentation tonight, and just thinking in retrospect what the city looked like some years ago. Think about Matson Park, which today is really a gem for the city. And for those of us who are more senior and look at pictures, we remember what Matson Park looked like at one point. Coal, coal loading facility, trains. Somebody had the vision to say, you know, what you really plan ahead. And if you take that and extend it to Founder's Landing, somebody else did that, remember the big oil tanks there? And so somebody did have some future ideas about it, and it was, I think, the city commission along with the planning commission. And the brownfield legislation came around to help out, and now you think about Liberty Way, what we're going to have there shortly. Very, very nice professional office complex, really to that entrance of the city. It's an interesting time that's going on. I think a lot of things to be positive about. It is going to be challenging. Moving the public works building is not like packing a couple of file cabinets and picking them up and moving them, taking the hospital and moving that entire facility. So it's going to be bumpy. But when it's over, I don't know, it'll also be under commission, but hopefully, there'll be some other new projects that come along with it, and I think we've got to sometimes stay focused on that, on the positive aspects of it. And that's important, and I just wanted to say that. A couple of other things. This weekend was Harbor Fest, past weekend. The weather cooperated, made it a lovely weekend. Tomorrow, this coming weekend, we have Jazz, the Blues Festival in the Matson Park, and tomorrow night, there is a blues, little blues festival on the front lawn of Peter White Library as an enticement. So if anybody's there, you know, stop in. With regards to the United Way, it's the third Michael Angely who will be chair of the United Way. Mike Angely, who came here, built the grocery store, raised his family, was the chair of the United Way, and his son is the chair of the United Way, and his son is now going to be the chair of the United Way. So I just think that's a legacy thing that we should, we should mention. The state legislature goes back into session next week, and one of the issues on the agenda is the road issue, revenue for the roads. There's, they haven't decided on anything, but there's two provisions in there which I think we and other municipalities, counties, cities, townships should be concerned about. They are proposing to take $600,000 out of the general fund. It is not a real robust general fund already, and then they said they're going to take an additional $600,000 in anticipated revenue growth. That will impact us, because that will eventually get translated into revenue sharing or personal property tax or whatever those specific things are. And I think we should probably tell our legislators that if you're going to do a road improvement, do a road improvement, and do it like most other states do by raising the revenue, and having the people who use the roads pay for it rather than taking it on other parts of the budget. And I also, by the way, I agree with a couple of my colleagues here that maybe we should look at some sort of marijuana ordinance, sort of proximity, especially to schools. I don't know what, it's easy to articulate it here, I don't know what that's actually going to mean in terms of enforcement and specificity, so, thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome. Commissioner Reynolds?
With regard to the Don Hayes issue of the medical marijuana, I'd just like to ask the city attorney or the city manager, for that state law would still trump any ordinance that we would do, correct?
State law will trump any ordinance if it's in conflict with the ordinance, but, you know...
So we could create something?
We could do something that's not in conflict with the ordinance, certainly.
Okay. I have nothing further to add this evening.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple things. One, I would hope people would, who have opinions regarding the bike lanes on Third Street, would come to the Commission and voice them. It's an experiment to see how it works. There are, I think, obvious flaws that need to be redone. There are some good parts of it. I think we need to kind of set a timeframe to really look at it, maybe after it starts snowing and you can't see the bike lanes, so we could then say, okay, this worked, this didn't work, and we need input. And I've certainly had more than my share of inputs on all sides, so I think we need to have a time when we can get together and talk about that, because it is, it is controversial, but it does have some real merits associated with it. I have two people who called who want to serve, but according to the new rules that we have, in theory, allowing people to serve on two commissions at the same time, it won't work for them, and I think that's why I had asked for a group to, the group that did write this recommendation, to look at it again, and then maybe we could re, have another agenda discussion about it. I don't personally understand the comment by Commissioner Campana about the scapegoat. I've worked very hard for this year to try to have this Commission work together as a team to govern this city, and I have never felt that anyone was trying to make anyone a scapegoat, and if people feel like they're a scapegoat, sometimes they're bringing that on themselves by their actions, their attitudes, and their accusations. But I, that's certainly not the agenda that I've been trying to work with my fellow commissioners to do. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Nothing further this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.